Vice Chair LeVere.
Here.
Authority Member Buchanan.
Here.
Authority Member Day.
Here.
Authority Member Shock.
Here.
Authority Member Webb. Authority Member Winsec.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum and both alternates will be voting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the -- everyone please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item of business is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Any comments, questions, or motions?
I move we approve the minutes from the last meeting? Or do I need to re -- do we have the term?
No, you just need to say so.
I move to approve the minutes for the January 10th, 2018 regular meeting of the Littleton Licensing Authority.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to express opinions or ask questions. That is not part of the agenda as set forth with the upcoming business items. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on something that is not on our slate of business for the evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, liquor license application hearings. And our first order of business is item A, a resolution to approve a liquor license application for Roots Colorado, Inc., doing business as Dirt Coffee, 5767 South Rapp Street, Littleton, Colorado. The licensee applicant here.
Hello.
Hi. And who are you?
Lauren Burgess.
Hi, Lauren. Before we do anything else, we usually swear in people who are not attorneys. So can I have you raise your right hand? And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give before this authority is truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. And at this time, I will make a motion to enter Exhibits A through G.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The floor is yours for any presentation you'd like to make for your application.
Sure. So Dirt is a nonprofit and we have been running as a mobile coffee truck for the past four years. Our mission is to train, employ, and empower young adults with autism. We are hopefully here in April opening up a brick-and-mortar of 5767 South Rapp Street and would love to serve wine and beer.
I noticed in your application, your lease agreement, you've had the premises under lease for a number of months already?
Yes, a little over a year.
And have you -- what have you been doing that time? Have you been operating out of there or?
No, we've been working with the city to get approved all of the necessary licensing and approvals to begin construction and then moving through construction. So we are about 80% done or through construction with an anticipated open date of April 2nd.
All right. I see that you also conducted the petitioning survey about the needs and desires of the neighborhood yourself.
Yes.
Can you take us through that?
Sure. That was a lot more cumbersome than originally anticipated, but we're really glad we did it. So we are a super small organization and we also provide community-based therapy for individuals with autism. So myself, a couple of the individuals we serve, as well as a few of our therapists, we call them, who work directly with the individuals we serve, canvassed our neighborhood, local businesses, and housing, and had the opportunity to not only share our mission but then request their support for our beer and wine license. Most of the houses we went to and businesses we went to were either not home or not qualified to sign, meaning they didn't own the business we went to. Of the ones that were home, we -- a few ladies hugged us and greeted us with tears and excitement for our coffee shop opening and most other people were like, "Yep, sounds great, here's my signature," and a few declined.
What I did not see in these petitions, were there any that said, "No, I think there's enough"?
I believe there was one. It was Kate's Wine Bar.
Just looking this down, I see needs and desires meant -- okay, there it is, five. Religious objections, four. Declined to sign, 24. Number ineligible to sign, 29. And what do you have under other? What's the 16 for other? Do you remember?
For the few that I personally went to, we had a couple other -- one woman said that she was too busy, another one said she was uncomfortable signing. So I'm assuming that that's what most of those were. We'd have to go through our paperwork to see those notes.
Any other questions from the authority or?
How many employees do you plan are going to be serving alcohol or involved with that?
So our goal is to train and employ up to 100 people within our first year. However, so we're an employee-heavy operation. Our nonprofit mission is kind of built that way, but we plan to have two to three employees there at a time. There will always be a bartender there or a barista there serving either the coffee, beer, or wine in addition to the young adults with autism that we're training and employing.
And who will be checking IDs?
So that would be the bartender.
Okay. And will they go through any kind of training?
Yes, so the traditional tips training. Yes.
You ever work in a job where you had to card people?
Yes.
You ever turn anybody down?
I'm sorry?
You ever turn anybody down? Ever?
Have I turned?
When you carded somebody?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you tell us about your construction and your build-outs? Anything particular of note about that process and how you'll store alcohol? What kind of security and control you have?
Sure. So we plan to have a liquor cabinet downstairs that is locked and then we will have, I believe, one or two wines on tap. We're still deciding what capacity we have. We'll have a total of four taps. So one or two wines on tap and then one or two beers on tap, and that would be it.
And it looks like your initial design here has maybe six seats at a front-window bar, maybe a -- are there seats at the bar where they're served as well?
Yes. So where there is bar seating, they'll be served.
Okay.
Everything else would -- they would be expected to come to the counter to be served.
And then a large table, community table, and a back room?
Yes. The back room is actually now being turned into two bathrooms, so there's not really a back room.
Okay.
All the seating's on the inside?
Yes.
And I've noticed you've got your boundaries, your red outline, which is your license premises, around the property, which includes the front lawn. Do you intend -- do you have a fence around the property line?
No, we do not.
And if I'm not mistaken, Deputy Clerk, that would be an issue?
If they decided to serve alcohol outside, they -- there's nothing in state statute that requires a fence, just says they must control the premises, and there's nothing in city code.
Okay.
That would require a fence, but there would be a required control. It's my understanding at this time that you're not anticipating using the outside on an ongoing basis.
No, we're not allowed to by city requirements. We're not allowed to have additional seating outside or service outside because that triggers parking and a bunch of other things, apparently.
But maybe you can tell me about your business plan then. Will you allow people to be served a beer inside and carry that to the front lawn and sit in the grass?
No.
Okay.
No, no food or beverages should leave the premises.
Okay.
Alcoholic beverages.
What are your hours of operation?
So we are planning right now, tentatively to be open seven days a week. Saturdays and Sundays, opening at eight, closing at three or four, and then Monday through Friday, opening at seven. Monday through Wednesday, closing at six or seven, and then Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, closing at 10:00.
Will the wine, beer be served at the same time as all coffee options or is there only certain hours?
That's a good question. So probably, it's undecided, but probably not before, I would say, 11:00 a.m.
Do you have an estimate of the percentage of sales for alcohol that you're anticipating?
I do not. Our main business plan calls is we're a coffee business. One of the main reasons that we have decided to pursue a beer and wine liquor license is to provide longer hours of operation and a business model that would sustain us past that 4:00 p.m. kind of coffee hour that dies down and allowing us to employ and train more individuals that we're serving.
You'd be serving food as well?
Yes.
Can the clerk remind me, what is the percentage for sales?
With a beer and wine license, there is no percentage of sales and their only food requirement is that they provide sandwiches and light snacks.
Any other questions from the authority?
Earlier you mentioned you think you might, I don't know, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. You said at 4:00 p.m. is when that coffee hour winds down. Are you extending the hours beyond that for the alcohol sales?
So that would be on like Saturday and Sunday that we're planning on closing early or Monday, Sunday through -- I'm sorry, I'm mixing up my dates. Sunday through Wednesday, we'd be closing earlier, and then Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we'd be open later. The goal is to start off with more limited hours and then grow from there depending on what the needs of the community are.
Do you have any other witnesses or testimony you'd like to give?
No.
Thank you very much. You may have a seat.
Thank you.
Discussion from the authority? Motions?
I move that the public hearing be closed and that resolution of the Littleton Licensing Authority be approved, which grants Roots Colorado Incorporated, doing business as Dirt Coffee, 5767 South Rapp Street, Littleton, Colorado, a beer and wine liquor license contingent upon approval by the Colorado Liquor Enforcement Division and based upon the following findings of fact. One, that notice of the hearing was based, properly posted and published, that the applicant has possession of the premises and the premises are suitable for the requested license; that the needs of the neighborhood are not now being met; that the desire of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood, that the license be issued; number five, existing similar licenses in the designated neighborhood are not adequate; and six, the applicant is of good moral character, record, and reputation.
Before we take a second, I will ask if there are any comments from the public in support or against this application. Seeing none, I will second the motion. Will the clerk please pull the authority?
Vice Chair LeVere.
Yes.
Authority Member Buchanan.
Yes.
Authority Member Day.
Yes.
Authority Member Shock.
Yes.
Authority Member Winsec.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Good luck to you.
Next item of business is 6B, resolution to approve a liquor license application for Lights Out LLC, doing business as Lights Out, 1500 West Littleton Boulevard, Unit 110, C and D, Littleton, Colorado. Hi, can you introduce yourself for the authority?
Justin Gichon.
Hi, Justin. And can you raise your right hand, please?
Hi, my name is Eva Garretson. I did the survey for Lights Out, so I figure I might as well get sworn.
Sure, thank you. Both raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this authority is truthful?
I do.
Thank you very much. I make a motion to enter Exhibits A through G, or attachments.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Justin, the floor is yours.
The company name is Lights Out. We're providing escape rooms and--
Excuse me, Justin. You're gonna need to move closer or sneak up, sir. Thank you.
Sorry, I have a scratchy throat, too. No, I'm okay, thanks. So Lights Out is the name of the company. We're an escape room and social lounge. We have games and seating throughout the social lounge so people can partake before or after doing the escape room. To clarify on the escape room, escape room is basically an entertainment room where people go in and solve puzzles, riddles, games to get out within a lot of time.
Thank you. Do you want to start with your petition? Have the results of your petition articulated?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Eva Garretson. I am owner of Liquor Licensing Professionals, doing business as Liquor Pros. We do liquor and marijuana petitions throughout the state of Colorado. We've been in business now going on 14 years, have done well over 1,000, let's see, 1,200 petitions so far throughout the entire state. We conducted the Needs and Desires Survey regarding the beer and wine liquor license for Lights Out. This particular survey was conducted on the dates of Saturday, January 20th, and Monday, January 22nd of 2018. We had a total of four circulators for this particular survey. Prior to the start of the survey, our circulators were briefed on the type of liquor license that was being applied for. They were provided with business and residential packets that included a face sheet with a preamble, application type, hearing information, instructions, and a map of the defined area. We did visit the site along with Justin to gain more information regarding the hours of alcohol sales, where alcohol was going to be allowed, what type of alcohol, of course, just including the beer and wine, but if there were going to be any IPAs or anything else additional to that as well. We also visited the site because of the concept. The hardest part about this particular survey, and I've done many, was actually explaining what an escape room was. So when you start the conversation, so you're gonna get locked in this room, right? And then have to explain to there that there's alcohol on top of it, it became quite difficult. So we did ask each circulator, though, to remain unbiased in their approach. We do not guarantee results for our clients. We simply obtain the results and provide them to the authority as such. So we do take a no just as much as we take a yes. Circulators attempted a total of 530 businesses and residents. Actual contact was made with 204 of those, and out of those, we obtained a total of 141 signatures. We obtained 47 signatures from business owners and managers, with 41 signing in favor at 87%, one that was opposed at 2%, and five with no opinion at 11%. The residential total signatures were 94, with six -- I apologize, 85 signing in favor at 90%, three were opposed at 3%, and six with no opinion at 6%. In considering just the yes and no signatures, we had 126 that signed in favor at 97% and four that were opposed at 3%. If we consider some of the reasons for opposition that might be considered invalid or don't necessarily speak to the needs and desires of this, of the survey, one was against alcohol personally and one said because of children. If we take those signatures out, we have a total of 98 that signed in favor for this particular license in this area and only 2% opposed. So given these results, we feel that this reflects a positive need and desire for this particular license in this area. May I answer any questions?
Questions from the authority? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Justin, do you do this by reservation or what's the business? What's the course of business, I guess? The escape room plan, do you have walk-ins? Do you have people hanging out that aren't, not partaking in the escape room?
At the moment, it'll just be, our operations are Tuesday through Sunday, and in order to partake in the facility, you would have to make a booking for the room, for the escape room itself, and then the social lounge is available for you before or after your room. We're planning on a couple Mondays, or just one Monday a month or so, opening up just the social lounge and doing like an event night where we might show a film or something like that.
Okay. Do you, on the site map here, are these individual boxes, are those all individual escape rooms?
Yes, those are the rooms.
All right, so you can accommodate nine escapes at one time?
Actually, the way that the boxes are set out, there's, they're actually in groups of two for the most part. So there's a, there should be like a little opening in between. And then, so there's actually four bigger escape rooms and then there's one small one that's over behind to the side of the lobby.
Okay.
Will the guests be able to bring the alcohol into the escape rooms?
No.
Will it's served in the social lounge only?
They will place their orders up at the lobby desk where we'll have employee up there, and then when they place their orders, they will get their hand stamped because we're gonna be limiting the amount of drinks that they can purchase. And the reason for that is to keep the cycle going of patrons that come through so that we don't have people just sitting there all day drinking kind of thing.
What have you set that drink limit at?
We're gonna be at either two or three. We're debating on that at the moment.
On the floor design you gave us, are there restrooms there?
There's a restroom by the kitchen.
Okay.
And that is a unisex handicap bathroom. And then just outside of our suite is a, it's considered a mall.
Okay.
And right outside our door, our men's and women's restroom, and there's another ADA restroom as well.
Do you monitor people while they're in the escape room? Do you have cameras?
Yes. Yeah, so we have cameras in each one of those boxes that you see, and then we have two cameras that'll be in the social room. There's one camera in the lobby. There's one camera watching the kitchen area where the alcohol is, and there is a camera in the office watching where the storage of alcohol will be as well.
Have you run escape rooms before? Is this brand new?
Nope, it's new. Nope, it's new.
Have you, what kind of research have you done into this business type and any, are there concerns that you've heard about this kind of business with others? Have you learned any lessons, just kind of dipping your toes into this so far?
Majority of the business models that I've looked at have been fairly positive. A lot of the ones that pop up as far as escape rooms go are a lot of mom and pop shops. So they'll like rent out houses and things like that, and then convert the rooms into escape rooms. Not too many escape rooms actually offer the alcohol side of it. A lot of them are, you come in, you get in, you get out, and you're gone. So I'm trying to offer something that's a little different in that aspect, that even if you are in a room with some different people, and you enjoy their company, you know, just solving the room, you can actually get to know each other afterwards, rather than, okay, we're gone for the night.
Only reason I kind of mention that is, I can imagine being inside an escape room might be higher emotion, or maybe a little more intense strain on a relationship, and if you have a group of people that maybe are very familiar with each other, but, you know, they have their history, and they are put in a stressful situation, and you mix alcohol into that, there are rules within the liquor code about disorderly conduct, and I don't know if these kinds of situations lend to more physical altercations or not, but that could impact your liquor license down the road.
Right, and we do have in our waiver that they have, that they're gonna sign, that we do have set up, that we won't allow anybody in that is intoxicated into the room, and that is at the discretion of the employees. And that was also the reasoning for keeping the alcohol out of the escape room itself.
How many employees do you anticipate hiring?
In our first year of business, based off our current projections, we're probably gonna be about five to six.
Are you planning on giving them training related to serving alcohol?
Am I reading this right? This says, this is an application for a liquor store license?
No, it's a beer and wine retail license.
That's not what it says here in my-
In the communication?
Yes.
That's what it says on the application, though.
Okay, it says beer and wine there, yep.
Any other questions from the authority for the applicant? Justin, I apologize if you might have said this already, but what has been your background in establishments with service of alcohol?
I have no previous history.
Okay. Have you done any formal trainings on-
I have not done informal training. I intend to get trained with employees.
How many employees do you have to run this?
We intend to have five to six. At the moment, it is just me and my wife.
Is it a functioning escape room now?
No.
Or is it, okay, so you're still in the build-out phase?
Yes, we're still building.
Will that go through, do you anticipate to have the escape room operating from day one with the alcohol? Are you gonna have the escape room already running?
No, I intend to open all at the same.
And is this, this is a family environment where families can come in with kids, small kids, or is this an experience that's 21 and over, or?
It'll be both. So our hours of operation, sorry, hours of operation Tuesday through Thursday are gonna be 3 through 10, and then Friday and Saturday, it will be noon till 11:00, and then on Sundays, it'll be noon to 7:00. What we're implementing is that after 6 o'clock, that's the time we're at at the moment, is that only 18 and above will be allowed at the establishment. So if a family environment, if they, if a family wishes to partake with younger kids or something like that, they will come in during the day, and then at night, it'll be more reserved for adults.
But you'll be serving alcohol the whole time?
Any further questions from the authority?
Oh, and I would, I would like to add that no one under 18 will be allowed in without parent or guardian. We do have that set up as well.
Seeing no further questions from the authority, thank you. At this time, we will take public comment from the audience.
Open the public hearing. You have to formally open the public hearing.
My apologies. We will open the public hearing right now at 7:01, and we will take public comments from anyone in the, in the audience. Can you state your name for the authority?
My name is Tony Gallagher. I've been living in Littleton for 30 years, and I have one question for you. How much is this gonna cost?
A walk-in is at $28.
Justin, yeah, you need to speak in the microphone.
A walk-in is at $28. Group pricing is at 25. We will be offering discounts monthly for people to come in, and we'll probably be going as low as $20. Yes, per head.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:02. Discussion from the authority?
Motion first, then discussion.
Oh, motions first.
Thank you.
I move-
Oh, go ahead.
I move that the public hearing be closed and the resolution of the Littleton Licensing Authority be approved, which grants Lights-Out LLC, Doing Business as Lights-Out, 1500 West Littleton Boulevard, Unit 110, C through D, Littleton, Colorado, a beer and wine license contingent upon approval by the Colorado Liquor Enforcement Division, and based upon the following findings of fact. One, that the notice of the hearing was properly posted and published. Two, that the applicant has possession of the premises, and the premises are suitable for the requested license. Three, that the needs of the neighborhood are now not being met. Four, that it is the desire of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood that the license be issued. Five, that existing similar liquor licenses in the designated neighborhood are not adequate. And six, that the applicant is of good moral character, record, and reputation.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the authority? Seeing none, will the clerk please pull the authority?
Vice Chair LeVere.
Yes.
Authority Member Buchanan.
Yes.
Authority Member Day.
Yes.
Authority Member Schach.
Yes.
Authority Member Winsec.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next item on the agenda is 7A, which is a probable cause hearing to determine if probable cause exists, and to set show cause hearing for the Shaq JDR Restaurant and Bar Group, Doing Business as the Shaq, 151 West Mineral Avenue, Littleton, Colorado. I'll move to admit items, Exhibits A through NB. And all those in favor?
Aye.
City Clerk, do you have, or Ms. City Attorney McClelland, do you have a presentation?
No formal presentation. As you can see in your packet, we have provided the police report related to this incident. And I would just also say that there was a citation provided, in this case, for over-service.
And we don't have any further information on how that citation was just, not dispensed, but adjudicated? The current disposition?
My understanding, the last that I heard, was that it was an unsupervised probation.
Discussion on the authority?
Certainly more clear-cut than some of the ones we've seen recently, from my perspective. That's a lot of drinks.
Yeah, based upon the notes, the details of the police report, the outcome of a citation being issued, my personal opinion is that there's enough in here, that enough exists for a probable cause hearing. Yeah, two things for me. I mean, yes, there's quite a few drinks on, on that tab, right? One, maybe two, were shared. Some may have been fictionalized, which is a whole separate problem in itself, which would be enough to ask that we set a show cause hearing. But given the timeframe, also, that number of drinks, I think we're at two per hour. And, you know, the gentleman was there quite a long time. And I keep coming back to this issue where the statute is not, you can't serve someone who's intoxicated, you can't, the statute is, you can't serve someone who is visibly intoxicated. So again, we're kind of at a loss for testimony here or witness statements that suggest this guy was stumbling over, and everyone said, oh, have another. And I don't know how the rest of the authority feels on that, but-
Well, that's, my, my problem is there is no testimony of anyone in the bar, anyone else.
And do, do they provide the tabs?
They, well, they said they had it.
Besides, just saying.
It wasn't shown to us.
And these are all reasonable questions and lines of inquiry, I think, for a-
Authority Member Buchanan, can you-
Sorry, I mean, what I'm hearing, these are all reasonable lines of inquiry and questions. It makes sense, but I think we're, what we're doing, dealing with here is just whether we're setting a probable cause hearing. That, the bar on that is so incredibly low, and, and we only go off of the information in front of us. From what I'm seeing is that there's, that was my comment, was even compared to some of the ones we've had in the past, this is more obviously probable cause to go forward at this point than some of the ones that were much more remote in time or different circumstances. Excuse me.
Do we have a new city attorney?
Prosecutor. Prosecutor, yes, we do. Yes. And, and to be clear, we shouldn't be basing this off of what we've seen in the past.
Correct.
This is a singular incident for a specific licensee, and the threshold for probable cause is just that sufficient, you don't need sufficient evidence, you just have to have a reasonable belief that there is enough to move forward. So the evidence would come at a later time, but that's the threshold that you're looking at.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm with Tim. It's not against the law to serve someone that's drunk. It's against the law to serve someone that's visibly drunk, and that's where the threshold is.
Yeah, although, we might not be together because I have reservations about the statements that were given later, about when they cut him off. They supplanted a, I guess his regular drink was a vodka drink, and they supplanted that with just water, and he couldn't tell the difference, and they do that regularly, in that they may or may not have charged him for that drink that was not an actual drink. And so, based on that, I, I think I'd like to hear more and have this come back. So I think there's cause and- Yeah, I mean, if you look at the results of that PBT test, I mean, we're almost three times. The legal limit of intoxication, I know we're not talking about operation motor vehicle, but .08 was deemed a level of intoxication by the state, and that was only a half-breath test. You know, you take into account the arrival at 11:23 a.m., Littleton Police responded almost eight hours later, but that was still after they had stopped serving him alcohol. I, I think we should find to move forward for a show cause hearing. We'll give this a shot. We'll see if there's a second out there. I move to find that there is probable cause to believe that the Shaq JDR Restaurant and Bar Group, Doing Business as the Shaq, 151 West Mineral Avenue, Colorado, on October 14th, 2017, did violate the Colorado Liquor Code and Littleton City Code, and based on said findings, that public hearing be set for April 11th, 2018, for the purpose of considering the status of said license, wherein the above-mentioned licensee may be present to show cause, if any, why its license should not be suspended or revoked, and further that notice of these findings in the hearing to show cause shall be forwarded and served to the Shaq JDR Restaurant and Bar Group, Doing Business as the Shaq, 151 West Mineral Avenue, Littleton, Colorado, in accordance with the provisions of state law. I move that the preliminary hearing, if necessary, be set for the 14th day of March, 2018, for the purpose of considering a possible stipulation, if any, between the licensee and the city of Littleton.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, or are we going to, yeah, any discussion? Will the clerk please pull the authority?
Vice Chair LeVere.
Yes.
Authority Member Buchanan.
Yes.
Authority Member Day.
Yes.
Authority Member Schach.
No.
Authority Member Winsec.
Yes.
The vote is four in favor, with Authority Member Schach voting no. The motion carries.
And next item on the agenda is Item 8A. We will conduct a public hearing for a medical marijuana center license for Ascend Littleton LLC, Doing Business as Ascend Cannabis Company, 5231 South Santa Fe Drive, Littleton, Colorado. I will move to enter Exhibits A through E.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open the public hearing now or later? Okay. All right. Can I please have you each, speaking to the microphone, identify yourself with your name, and then we'll swear you in.
Steve Embry.
Scott Embry.
Scott Embry Jr.
Thank you. Will you all raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this authority is truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. City Clerk, I have one point of order, a question, kind of stems from- Thank you. City Clerk, I have one point of order question, kind of stems from Authority Member Shock. Is this a transfer, or is this a new license that another will vacate?
Okay. Great question, because it is handled a little bit differently than we do with liquor licenses. So, once upon a time, in our city code, we did not allow the transfer of MMCs. We allowed our four centers in town, and if someone went away, then there was kind of a scramble for whatever that license was, that was open. In 2014, we amended the code to allow for transfers of medical marijuana dispensary licenses, with the provision that the applicant wanting to transfer that license be approved for a new license first, and then their approval was contingent on the relinquishment of the existing license. That's how the Green Solution came to be in Littleton. They actually transferred the first license from Mother Nature's Miracle, which had been in a non-conforming location on Littleton Boulevard. Part of the contingency was that they moved to a conforming location, which they did. So, Ascend Cannabis would be moving into a conforming location that, for all intents and purposes, has already been vacated by Green Solution. They are not operating out of the location. And Mr. Embry just shared with me today a letter from State Liquor, how it's handled at the state level is a change of ownership, and that change of ownership has been approved. So, they have, in essence, relinquished the license from the Green Solution. At the state level, it now lives with Ascend, and so, the only thing they need to do is be approved at the local level, and it would be considered a transfer in our eyes.
The reference you said to the non-conforming, was that why the applicant was checked for a violation in the past?
No, no. They're moving into a conforming location. So, again, back in the day, our first four had popped up before we ever had a code section for medical marijuana centers, and so they just kind of landed where they were, and then we instituted buffer zones and distance requirements. They were grandfathered in, but the proviso was that if they were ever to transfer, whoever was taking that license would have to find a conforming location. In Ascend's case, they are already moving into a conforming location, because Green Solution did that in 2014. So, anything that you see on the application about any level of violation would be at one of their other dispensaries.
Not in the city of Littleton?
Absolutely, because they don't have a license here yet, so, okay?
Thank you. All right. Would you like to start with your presentation?
Yeah. So, my dad started Healing House back in 2010 with two partners, his brother and then one family friend. In 2015, they split their partnership and the business, and we rebranded as Ascend. My brother, Scott Jr., came on as a partner, and me as well. We do have two other dispensaries, one out in Lakewood, which is medical only, and then we do have a dispensary in Denver, which is medical and rec. Our grow is licensed down in Pueblo. There's three licenses down there, and we have a marijuana-infused product license down in Pueblo, too. So, we're licensed in three jurisdictions, already in the marijuana market pretty heavy as well. And we are members of this community, we all live here and would love to operate as a business out of here, too.
And Scott Jr., are you in Pueblo or Littleton?
Kind of back and...
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Yeah, sorry, guys. Kind of back and forth. I have a house down, I have a house up in Centennial, over off of Rappahoe University, and I run the businesses in Pueblo.
Okay.
So, I split my time.
Perhaps we'll start with your petition, or there was no petition, I'm sorry.
There is no needs and desires with marijuana-based businesses, at least not the city of Littleton.
And that would be interesting if there were, because people like to give their opinion in Littleton. But, okay. Scott Jr., can you speak to any of your past criminal history?
Yeah, I can.
You're the one that kind of...
Yeah, so, 18 years old, you know, fresh out of high school. Made a lot of mistakes in a very short period of time, and, you know, I think my history since then has shown that. All these charges were dismissed, they're not on my record. MED is good with it. Multiple jurisdictions are good with my past. I just equate it to truly that, being 18 and not really knowing what I, you know, right from wrong. I spent the next six years figuring that out, and 30 years old now, have a kid, you know, run these businesses. I look at myself as a success story, you know. What I was doing back then was illegal, but today it wouldn't be. So, yeah, yeah, that's, yeah. Not even a traffic ticket in 10 years, so...
On the application, I noticed the premises and the layout design. Whoever would like to speak to that. Obviously, conforming location, Green Solution was in there prior. The layout is changing a little bit. Do you want to take us through some of the changes that you're aware of?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we're going to keep the bones of the retail, so the retail flow. The only thing that we're going to be changing is the actual displays. And the way that the Green Solutions had it set up is you'd walk in and walk through the maze looking at all their products. The way that we set it up in our dispensaries is, we have set registers where patients can walk up, all the products are in front of them, they can have a one-on-one experience, and actually get administered the product that they need to ail their pain or their ailment that they're in there for. Rather than having somebody in a wheelchair going through a maze, we just like to make it very centralized, personable, so everybody can get their questions answered, so that they aren't, you know, moving and trying to talk. It's just very, very centralized.
And how do you do the check-in process? What are you looking for when people enter the vestibule to be checked in?
Yeah, so, the first thing that we check is proof of age, so they have to be 18 and over, and then they have to have a legal marijuana card. And so, the check-in process, they have to administer their ID, make sure that it's valid. And the state gives us strict regulations on the type of IDs that we can accept. You know, it has to be state-issued with date of birth. They have a whole section on it, so we check that, check the expiration next, name, date of birth, and then we verify that with the medical card, because the medical card also has the name, date of birth. And then on the medical card, since it is administered by a state governing authority, they have the state seal with wildflowers in the back. It has to be on an eight-by-eleven, non-tampered, or on a PDF file on the phone.
It looks like one of your alterations is the addition of a unisex toilet for customers?
That was initially there, in the retail, yeah.
Okay.
The only changes that we are making are actually just taking down one wall, that's just, and then putting in new displays.
And is all that on hold until this approval? Because it looks like the lease assumption was for January 1?
Yeah, everything is dependent on approval of...
So, they're still running everything, and, or...
So, we're just kind of waiting through the legal transfer, so there's just this period of time where the state is reviewing everything, you know, hearings are going on. Last I heard, they had recently just closed it down to start renovating for us. So, I think as of recently...
There's no product, as I, there's no product in there, as I understand.
But we haven't been able to really gain access to the facility, other than walkthroughs, right?
Yeah, so the only access that we've had is just a monitored walkthrough of just the premises, what's there, how it looks. And then, they've taken down, or taken down their sign, pretty much closed up, and we're just waiting on this approval to be able to go in there and make it our own, because these licenses, we don't want to go in there and make changes and then not get licensed, either by local or state jurisdiction.
Can you remind me, what sales location centers do you have in the state of Colorado, broken down by recreational and medical?
We have a location in Denver. It's off of Hamden and Yosemite. We actually went in there and revamped a Wendy's that was an eyesore, and we're just on Yosemite, and we have 40 parking spots there. And then, the medical license that we do have is out in Lakewood at Kipling and Alameda.
So, that first one is dual-purpose. So, that one's eight, that one's 21 and OutMed and recreational, so we can use the same one. And then we have the 10-7-12, West Alameda, that's medical only. So, it's going to be very comparable to what we're looking at in Littleton. Both suburbs, you know, I mean, we kind of operate in the outside of town. We, you know, we supply suburbs, and, I don't know, we all live, I live, own a couple houses in Littleton, and I, I don't know, we're thrilled to be here. Four licenses is just, you know, it seems like a lot, but there's, it's very small compared to, comparatively. But, yeah, we're really excited.
On pages three and pages five of the application, you did indicate violation, notice, suspension, or revocation. What were those for?
At the time, those are on me. My sons are not associated with those stipulations.
Okay.
So, the first one, there's two. One is Pueblo. We had just opened the location in Pueblo, the greenhouse, and we had a plant count issue that was brought up to us by the MED of our transfers and how we were doing that, and how the IFRD, the tags were being put into the, and not put in certain plants, you know, of size, because the size was just changed at that time by a two-by-two. And so, that was one of the stipulations, I think was the big one there. And then my urban cannabis is a, there's a few things on there, but the big one on that is a under-21 sale. That was based on, you know, us as owners taking responsibility first. I'm not going to point any fingers at any one employee for not setting them up properly to be successful in collecting that ID properly back in, I think it was 2014, 15, middle of September of...
No medicinal violation, or medicinal locations, then?
That was a rec.
That was a rec.
That was a rec, mhm.
You entered into an agreement to resolve those issues?
Correct.
And you've completed all the terms of that?
Yes, sir.
There's another letter in here in the packet. There's a warning letter dated, it appears to be dated after...
Yeah, that was at Lakewood. The MED, we had asked them to come in because we had a transfer of licensing or change of ownership from mine to the partners that I was with. So, we asked them to come in and do a look over our metric system to be able to clean up some of this old past stuff. At that point, in coming in, she saw that one, there's a couple rooms that weren't on her drawing, and she, Kristen, with the MED cited as for a warning. We did our MOP, which is the modification of premise, to be compliant with the MED, and was given the warning letter.
So, that situation's been resolved, then?
Yes, it has. The MOP has been, the application has been approved, and...
I'm not sure what the origin of this document is. It might be from Community Development Department with the city of Littleton. This attachment has a current TGS floor plan, the Green Solution, and that one shows a difference.
Are you speaking about the letter from Pam Hall, city planner, in regards to conforming location and those kinds of things?
Yes.
Okay. So, normally Pam would be here tonight as the community development and zoning expert on medical marijuana dispensaries. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be with us tonight. So, she provided that letter just to let you know that they do meet all of the requirements. The reason that you have the Green Solution floor plan is theirs is essentially the same, other than swapping out displays in the front, and I believe there is one door that's an interior door that they are taking and replacing with like a flip-up...
Swinging door.
A swinging door. But none of that impacts square footage or any of their other conforming requirements. And so, she just wanted to make sure that you knew she had looked at all of those things. She had spoken with Mr. Embry to clarify any questions that might have been posed to her this evening. If there, and she did want me to let you know that if there are things that you still have concerns about, we could certainly collect those questions. She would be back in the office on Monday. If we were to do that, then any approval would have to be conditional upon clarification. This really is kind of one of the most straightforward transfers we've seen, because they essentially are not changing the business model from how it's been operating for three years...
Yeah.
...under the Green Solution.
I think what my concern with this memo from her was, is that it's written that this is the current Green Solution floor plan, and it is different than the floor plan that they've, they have submitted, in the fact that this one does not show the unisex toilet, this one does not show...
I think the one that the Embry has submitted is a little bit more detailed, potentially, than...
A lot more detailed.
Yeah. But it was based off of the Green Solution floor plan. So, I'm sure that Ms. Hall just provided you with what she had.
Okay, which could be outdated, and maybe Green Solution didn't knock down walls and make alterations that were against their license. Other questions from the authority? Any other statements or testimony you'd like to provide, any other witnesses?
No, sure.
Thank you. You may have a seat. At this time, we'll open public hearing for this application at 7:33. Seeing no public comments, we'll close the public hearing at 7:33. Any motions?
I move to close the public hearing and approve a resolution of the Littleton Licensing Authority, which grants Ascend Littleton LLC, doing business as Ascend Cannabis Company, 5231 South Santa Fe Drive, Littleton, Colorado, a medical marijuana center license contingent upon relinquishment of the medical marijuana center license currently held by the Green Solution, and receipt and approval of reports from the Colorado Bureau of Investigation and approval by the Colorado Medical Marijuana Enforcement Division. The license approval is based upon the following findings of fact: Notice of the hearing was properly posted and published. The application is complete and signed by the applicant. The applicant has paid the application fee and any other fees required. The application does not contain any material falsehood or misrepresentation. The application complies with all of the requirements of Title III, Chapter 20. The applicant...
Title III, Chapter 20. The applicant, any person with an ownership interest of 5% or greater, or any manager, have not previously been convicted of a felony violation. And seven, the proposed location of the medicinal marijuana center is permitted in that the building is not located within any distance restrictions established by city code. Clerk, please poll the authority.
Vice Chair LeVere?
Yes.
Authority Member Buchanan?
Yes.
Authority Member Day?
Yes.
Authority Member Schock?
Yes.
Authority Member Winsec?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Good night.
We'll move us to item number 10, which is reports, and we'll start with staff.
So, one thing we just wanted to let you guys know about is that coming out of that study, of our last study session, we are actually, tonight after this meeting, we are going to go do a training for the police on liquor rules and basically just going over, we, actually Colleen, I wouldn't say we, I didn't really do anything, but Colleen has taken, we have a little booklet that had been originally written in, I think, 2012 for the police, to have just a little booklet that has the relevant citations in our city code and state code regarding liquor-licensed establishments. And we have updated it because there's been some changes since then in terms of the type of licenses and some state regulations. And we are going to be going over there tonight to, the first of two trainings, to go over those changes and explain to them a little bit about what you guys do and the types of things that we're looking for in police reports and that kind of stuff. So, that's what we're going to be doing tonight.
Sounds like a party.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, our pleasure, absolutely. I apologize. I'm looking for something I was going to talk to you about. So, if you want to come back to me real quick, give me a minute.
Sure. Any items of discussion for the authority members?
No items of discussion. How are we looking for the upcoming months?
At this time, I only have one new license for next month. But depending on how things go after tonight, we may have a preliminary hearing. So, okay, I had made myself a note, so give me just one second.
Sure.
Yes, does anybody up there have anything?
Well, I have a question for you, which will distract you. With our new licensee, Dirt Coffee, they, if someone broke their control and brought the beer out to the front lawn, that's still prices licensed premises. So, technically, that'd be a defensible reason, right? Or would they still be in trouble because their control, which was at the door, was broken?
As long as it's part of the licensed premise, they'd still be within code. Now, if they stepped onto the sidewalk, that's a different thing. But since they really don't have, I think the reason that they included the yard is they had talked about possibly in the summertime doing like something outside. And the cost to temporarily modify your premises has gone up quite a bit. So, that might be their reasoning. At this time, I don't have any concerns that we're going to have a bunch of people getting extremely inebriated at a coffee shop and wandering out into the yard. I would hope not.
Or she just thought that was a premise, too.
Right.
It also sounded like their lease does not allow them to do anything on their lawn.
Based on their filing as a nonprofit, does that change anything in the relationship they have with the city?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I apologize. I had a house bill I wanted to talk to you about. I'm going to give it one more shot, and then I'll just email it to you if I can't find it.
Any idea when the city council will be studying our proposed changes for the...
It's still on items to be scheduled. Right now, they're working a lot on fire. There's some comp plan things that are kind of taking precedence. We're hoping that it will come within the next few months, but right now, there's no anticipated date. But they see it on the horizon, so they know it's there. I apologize. I'm not finding it, so I will email it to you tomorrow. Okay? My apologies.
All right, with that...
How about upcoming changes in the law now? What's coming up in 2019 now?
Well, the big one in 2019, of course, is at the end of this year, December 31st will be the last day with the 3-2 classification. Starting January 1, everything will be considered fermented malt beverage. There's still rulemaking going on and discussion about how that is going to impact current 3-2 holders when it goes to full fermented malt beverage, especially those that are in close proximity to retail liquor stores and things like that. There's not a clear direction yet, what that's going to look like. And if past history with state liquor and rulemaking is any indication, we probably won't know what that's going to look like until after it goes into effect, is my guess, or there will be more changes after the first of the year. So, one thing that has come up in rulemaking, just kind of as a red line item, is when 3-2, when that classification goes away, what does that do to fermented malt beverage in public? Because right now, in the state of Colorado, there is no law that prohibits consumption of 3-2 beer in public. That's left up to municipalities and towns with open container laws, such as we have. And so, there have been things kind of bounced around. Do we allow fermented malt beverage? Is that what becomes the classification? Do we allow nothing, or do we allow everything?
Yeah, because it would affect like parks and wildlife.
Correct.
Yeah, state parks.
Correct. So, that's one of the things that's kind of being hammered out right now.
And just for my, how I understood, as I was reading all that, and I was neck-deep into it last year, reading all those bills that got passed and how they worked, was that, for all intents and purposes, liquor stores were becoming wine and hard liquor, wine and spirits distribution, and then beer was going to be treated for sales purposes like 3-2 has always been treated. For the retail and the selling side, that's how to look at it, and that there's no distance restrictions from 3-2 to another 3-2 to another liquor store in any way. So, beer is just going to be everywhere without any distance requirements, that leaving the retail liquor stores with their wine and their distilled spirits subject to those distance requirements for the sale side. And then, you're absolutely correct, on the park side, on the consumption side, that they didn't pick the correct nomenclature from the 3-2 side of that. And so, since they're using the malt beverage as the new 3-2, and only fermented malt beverage is what used to be 3-2, is only what's allowed in parks.
So, are the convenience stores allowed, like the craft beers also?
Yeah.
That absolutely would be something that they would be allowed.
And is there alcohol percentage that...
Some of the craft beers go up to, I've seen 5.8.
No, it would all just...
10 or 12, 14?
Yeah, it would all just become fermented malt beverage. What that would mean, too, is right now, on-premise licenses, like an H&R or a Tavern, can only sell above 3-2, but once it all becomes fermented malt beverage, that goes away. So, they'd be able to sell 3-2 as well. Why they'd want to, I don't know, but...
My understanding from going through like Budweiser, that it says does not exceed 6%, and most of those beers are, they're not even 3-2. 3-2 is like 2.8. What it says on there is does not exceed. So, most, where you think it's 6%, it's 3.4.
And that's like parks, there's not really a way to test it either.
And from what I understand, from going through Budweiser, it comes from the same vat. It's just pulled off at a different place in the same vat.
We should probably take a craft brewing class, if the clerk can set that up.
Oh, you gotcha.
And you have to be there.
We can't go together, or it'd be a meeting.
Can we invite the city?
We'd have to go.
What if we hosted a, what if we host a meeting off-site?
Did you find your item? Okay.
No.
With no further discussion, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.